Work session items. We're going to have a couple of comments on work session items. Those items consist of, we're adding an item B and moving the others down to an update on the lining project progress. Item C will be presentation and strategic plan quarterly update, City Manager Fed Terror. Item D will be a joint discussion with the Downtown Development Authority, DDA, on a draft tax increment financing or TIF plan. City Manager Fed Terror and DDA Director Howard Button. Then we'll have other. Is there any couple of comments on work session related items? To Arna, we will move on to item B, the lining project progress.
So we've talked about this quite a bit with you and we've got some video footage, so we just kind of wanted to show you what the whole process is about. Once again, through the saw grant process, we've collected a tremendous amount of data on our system. We've looked at the age of all those sewers in the system. We've looked at the terminology of likelihood of failure, so the condition that they're in and then how critical it is to repair and replace those sections. When the engineers were going through the cost analysis reviews, there are two main things that you can do with the pipes today. One is complete replacement and the other is the line process that is going on right now. And the numbers are probably tough for you to see from there, but full replacement costs about twice as much as the rehabilitation that we're doing now. So this is a very cost-effective way for us to do capital investment in our sewer system and to fund some of that depreciation that we've been talking about for years. But it also has the dual purpose of reducing the amount of inflow and infiltration into the system. When the engineers were trying to evaluate which candidates were our top priority, specifically because we have a lot of sewers that are in not in the best condition and a lot of them are over 100 years old, we looked at the full characteristics and compared them to the likelihood of what the water flows are based on water consumption. And then the engineers were able to then look at how much flows were actually going through them with flow meters. And as you can see, the orange and the red districts are flowing way beyond what they should. So right now, the treatment plant is treating about 400,000 gallons a day on average of groundwater or surface water that's getting in through illicit connections. This year, with the first bond proceed, we are in the process of completing a pilot project. So we're upgrading 3,400 feet of sewer mains. And within those 134 feet, there's 133 service connections. So those are places in the pipelines that were tapped for service connections, different leads and so forth. Once the engineers and technicians went through and verified how many of those are actually active, we are only restoring 61 of those 133. So almost over half of the connections that were there and leaking water every day, every hour, those will be closed up and sealed forever. And I think when you see the pictures and the videos, that'll show that pretty clearly. This is just a sample of one of those sections from the drawings that we completed. And keep in mind, the Phase 1 US Real Development Loan that we have been approved is $4.4 million. That will be a much larger project, but doing the same type of things in some of these areas where we have bad sewers and high inflow and infiltration next year. So that's just a quick synopsis and then John's going to take you through and show you some of the videos that we find interesting.
Good evening, council members. Yes, John Bradley. I brought Lucas Richardson with us today. He's our local project inspector on the project. He's getting out some of the samples that have been taken from either the lining process of the pipe or the manhole lining process as well. I guess you could probably just leave the big one maybe on. They're very light, but you don't take them around, just give them the samples of pipe. So you can get an idea. So we talked about this briefly in the last time I was up here, but that's a resin impregnated tube. So it's got fel, it's got a resin and a hardener in it, which all catalyze under a certain amount of heat and then it forms its own structural pipe. That pipe could last on its own even if the host pipe fails. So we, Lucas and I started generating some pictures and videos of the process for each and we'd just like to show those so you can get an idea of what occurs. And I'll try to narrate as we go a little bit along the way here so you can see what's occurring. So if you could just go ahead and click the pointer to try, can you do it from here?
No.
Okay. We'll go ahead and see the first video. So this is the manhole lining process. Can you do this? Is this a problem?
No.
Always a technical difficulties in my seat if I'm up to play here. Can you get it right off of the? Yeah, we can. We can get it right off of it. If you could just go, if you just go ahead and go to the folder structure, it's showing on our computer. It's just, it's because you haven't, you haven't been able to get the presentation around there. There you go. So let's go ahead and pull it all back, Lucas. All right, so we're, go ahead. So this is a picture of the existing manhole structure, one of the ones that we lined. You can see that it's in tough shape and it doesn't get the greatest, that's what happens. Plumbers, who's our contractor on the project, they do a lot of televising amongst other items in here. This is the actual impregnation of the resin and fel called the liner for the wet out. So this is a part A and a part B component that went together, catalyzed under heat and impregnated that fel. And there's fiberglass liner on the outside as they get this shown on this sample that Lucas provided, the structural component. So they start out by letting out the bottom pipe, it goes in the inner of the manhole itself. And so that kind of sets the tone when they put the overall bag in and you're going to see that in a second. I can see much here. He's going to continue to, he's going to continue to wet off the rest of the liner and it has a, you know, has a shelf life, a hot life, a good type of a component like that. So they got a working time of like, I don't know, let's say like 30, 40 minutes or whatever it might be before it starts catalyzing and they're going to drop it in there and then they're going to apply steam to it so they can pressurize it and also provide the heat that's necessary to catalyze it. So they crane this thing up, that thing on the top, close to their boiler unit that provides the steam. And that has a little window in it, you can't see it, but they can kind of see how it's shaping to fit in to make sure that it's the way they want it. And then this is what the end product looks like. So you have, now you have a homogenous 360 degree product. There's no stitching, no overlapping in it, it's all together. It's all one piece and it will remain that way for its life. These, this application suggested that they have a 50 to 100 year life. The contractor does provide a 20 year warranty for this product. So now we're going to go through the pipe lining process, not much, not very dissimilar, but just in the horizontal application. So it still applies steam and air. This is the process to do the, to shove it into the pipe. So they're applying air to it right now and they're rolling it off of their truck. And they'll push that all the way through. This happened to be in the middle of the section to hit an additional manhole so they can break through it. So you can see how it's converting itself as it's going along. In a second here, it's going to show itself as it goes through the manhole. I don't know if I can explain it. So this is probably the most exciting part though. Now they're at the end right now, they're waiting for it to make sure they got the end of the liner. And they kind of have to close it along and talk to each other with radios so that they know that they're not going to get smacked in the face. So, I mean, essentially what they would do at this point is once they have it ended is they would hook it back up to the steam unit. They would apply that steam, it applies the pressure to the pipe, keep it tight to the host pipe, carrying it one to two hours, give or take, whatever the parameters are. And then you end up with this. So each liner is a little bit different depending on its characteristics in the ground. This is about, I think this is a six mil, four and a half mil liner. We do have a liner that's going in tomorrow, third from Sibon to Ramstown, it's going to be three times the size, given the shape of the pipe and the depth and the condition of that pipe. So it'll be pretty substantial. So this is, oh, here's your existing pipe. You can see how it's fractured and like, if you take it like a clock and all four of us, you know, the 12, 3, 6, 9 positions as an indicator that, you know, at some point it's probably going to collapse. So this is a very good stage while the pipe is still around such that they can line the product, you know, line the pipe and maintain that strength and integrity. Because once it starts collapsing, there's really no turning back. This is the end product. I realize this isn't the best video. We just started making videos from the contractor this last week. They've almost all been completed, the entire segments that they have to do, they have one tomorrow, at two tomorrow, actually they do, and then be done with their segments. And then once that occurs, then we have a third subcontractor coming in and he will be reinstating, or he will be unwinding the lateral part, the connection points, the penetrations that Jeff was referring to. I just have a little village, I have one more video for that. Oh, actually, we had another video ahead of that. This is going to show them actually cutting the service. So they have a robot cutter, they follow with a camera. And this is off by field, so this is the, looks like a big Dremel tool type thing, you know. And so just, there you go, get right in there so you can get an idea of what it looks like. He positions it in front of the camera. And Lucas is actually in the truck taking a video of the video because we can't be in there. And you can see how they're cutting that dimple out, that's where one of the active service connections is at. So they do that rough because it's a rough cut. And then when they get done, you're going to see another portion where they have another instrument they put on, their implement they put on the end of there such that they can get a polished surface, all finished and nice and clean. They'll grab that stuff at the end, they don't let that stuff go downstream, they catch it off the end of the manhole. But that's kind of like a polishing wheel, brusher, I don't know, they have several of those tools. So it's very important at this point that they get this very clean such that the next guy coming in putting his lateral, or his connection part of the liner in to that service has the exact size. It's probably just taking quite a bit of time for everybody to measure things in their own ways such that they get everything the right way when they order it. So if we had like Jeff was saying earlier, we have 60 plus laterals that are reinstated, they have to go out and measure every single lateral, every single lateral T is different than, they're all different. Because they go up, you can have size change inside the service connection, you can have a deflection or turn, turn in there, maybe the material gets offset, whatever it might be, but they have to accommodate that. So every one of these services that will be coming in will be unique and they'll all be identified with their address on it as well.
From inside the pipe?
From inside the pipe. So it'll be spenciled in there one way or another such that in the future, when we go, you know, when the city has some open clean operations or whatever it might be, there's no, there's no guesswork. We know this goes to this guy's property and that's just it. And we've done a lot of legwork through guy testing and investigation work to make sure that we know that these are the correct connections to put back in the service. So I guess if we can show the last video. So this is called a T liner. This is an Alkaid product, a very big industry. It says going to create the T in the host pipe in this area right here. And it also has a offshoot up into the lateral. This part right here is a hydro, these are all hydrofilled materials at the end, so they swell. So no water will get, no water that's trapped between that pipe can ever get into that lateral at that point because it's got a gasket that swells. So whenever it's in the presence of water, it'll always block it out. So we haven't seen that yet. Contractor has been out to start measuring those things. We understand that he is ordering those things. More than likely that we start that work next week or, no, that's not right, 20, I think, is that right? So they'll be starting next week and they anticipate two to three weeks of work and then will close the project out. So we're going to work it over, you know, ESSA, Cypress and over by First and Third and for the most part, things have gone pretty well so far. I will entertain any questions you guys might have. I hope this helped a little bit more than just the physical talking and the edge of the last meeting, just to give you an idea of what's actually happening out there.
As council's aware, staff has been working on the strategic plan that we developed in providing quarterly updates. We're a little late on this quarter because of all the other things that were going on. But as before, I would just direct you to anything that's in red, that's something new since our last update. There's been a lot, a pretty good amount of progress made. A lot of our strategic points have been completed. Some are ongoing and might be continually ongoing. Some will have a definitive end. But if you've had a chance to look at anything red that's new, I don't know how far in-depth the council wants to go, or if you just, I'll just entertain any questions in terms of explanation on the progress we've made since then. One of the, one of the things that we did do that's reflected in this was our, we compiled all of the different energy initiatives that we've had over the past years. That's out on our website, there's like on our Facebook page, and it's a pretty extensive document that will, like I say, compile all the initiatives that we've had over the years. So that's one of the big points, but absent any questions, it's there for council's review. I guess we go next to our joint discussion with the-
... session with DDA? Okay, so the DDA is prepared a draft plan for the council to consider. As far as projects, we believe that the projects we've identified in the document closely align with the city's master plan, specifically including improving gateways to the downtown, orientating buildings to the river, improving pedestrian comfort, Riverwalk refurbishment, continuation of the facade program, street scape updates and redevelopment projects as well as supporting relocation of the farmer's market. We believe the DDA provides benefits to the city by stimulating development projects, some recent ones in Nancee is the Boaf Theater and the Blue Fish, and capturing additional tax revenue in the amount of approximately $100,000 that would otherwise be spent outside of the city. So we look forward to making sure that this TIF plan accomplishes what the council and the DDA board feel are the priorities to make the community successful. So with that, I'll let you, let the two boards and councils discuss that. The plan doesn't specify that, it just has a line item for farmer's market. And again, that was identified in the city master plan, so we're trying to keep a line
There are a couple of different locations that, based on current, current situation, ownership and so on, that farmer's market can go, including a portion that can be closed in lengthened period of the season, that the farmer's market can operate. Again, with the idea of increasing activity in the downtown, keep it going as long as possible. Number of communities have done the same thing where they have a portion of the market that's, you know, covered and that provides some, allows them to extend the pit the season. As a matter of fact, in the plan, the regional brownfield plan, the council approved a few years ago for the north side of the river where the current city park is in the edge water, North Channel, it's around the properties. There was a location in the plan for some improvements to a portion of the park that would accommodate enhanced farmer's market. Just one location, there is a couple more that have, what they're so for serve the purpose. They currently are bought in or taken or can be, like taken, I don't know, abandoned, but bought in can be converted for the purpose as part of the development plan for the sites.
But then north side is a brownfield redevelopment as opposed to a DDA TIFs, right?
Yes, the park, memorial park is in the brownfield plan. And the advantage of that is that in addition to utilizing TIF capture from the two mixed use developments that's where the North Channel, in addition to capturing all of the local taxes, we also, or the city, the DDA, can capture school taxes, which is another 24 modules, that can go towards the project that increasing the amount of available funding that of course the state reimburses the schools for that, that TIF capture. It would be a more ideal location, but there are other locations. Ideal location for that purpose because of the funding, but we have two other locations.
There are several ways to finance DDA according to state statute. One would be through tax increment finance, another would be by a million surcharge. The only thing we do for the downtown area is the tax increment planning, correct?
We should not really talk about another source of funding that would potentially negatively impact people. Is it available? Yeah, it is, it's possible, yeah. But at this point, I think most of the projects that we have discussed and considered would be, can be addressed through the current TIF mechanism, correct me if I'm mistaken.
I have a question. Except for the DDA description, how does the DDA help the rest of the taxpayers in the city administration? What's going on? What benefit does that taxpayer receive?
I think the benefit that a DDA provides to the rest of the communities through placement English, we've heard that term many times, that if the downtown has the entertainment, housing, the recreation available that draws people to want to live in that community. So more people are living in that community are increasing the taxpayers.
Does that happen, no?
I would say so.
I think this past weekend we've finished an example of that with sidewalk sales, which is a DDA event, the TJF, a private event. While Saturday's event with Cricks in the River was a DDA event, it certainly is in our downtown as well. And something else I would like to add to Tyler's response is the number of jobs and employment that downtown district provides. Those are many household jobs, not all, but it is one of the major hubs of economic activity in our city. And the people that are working there are residents of our town. So by having that focus on economic development, which has been a focus of the DDA since we brought Tyler on, that focus on economic development in our district because we're limited to spending dollars only within our district. I think that is a huge benefit to our city and the taxpayers and borrowers.
Except for the side rents and purchasing property and development, what else do you do in the district that will benefit the taxpayer?
We do beautification projects like the flower baskets. We pay for maintenance of the Riverwalk.
What portion of the Riverwalk, I'm sorry?
From 31 to Spruce Street, actually to the City Marina. Trying to think off the top of my head, what other project?
Yeah, I feel, may I add, last weekend I heard it was a good example of having a lot of activity, a lot of events that, and I can speak from a personal experience, we had tons of people that came to the brewery in our channel this past weekend. And so many people said, well, we didn't know that Nancee has that much activity. So in addition to 40, 42 jobs, new jobs that we generated at that particular business, we exposed the city in the downtown to a lot more people that otherwise would not cross to go further than what they used to in the past. And so there are, there is a domino effect of benefits by having, being able to support and bring in businesses that positively impact the whole economy of the area. The 40 something jobs at the North Channel, which are new jobs, are about 20 something of the people are from the city, the remaining are from just outside the city limits. So with these kind of businesses that are supported by the DDA and they would not go at those locations without the DDA, they are impacting positively the entire community. There is a domino effect.
And also, I think there's about, since we keep talking about jobs, approximately 450 FTEs, full-time employee equivalents in downtown district. Back to your question about what other projects we do, we pay $140,000 a year in our bond payment. If you remember from my budget presentation, a significant portion of our budget is taken up by required expenditures, which is largely that bond payment and then also, frankly, my salary. I guess we can debate what kind of benefit I bring or my position brings to the city. And then I also have another example is the new business competition that we started this year. I raised the money for that with the exception of $1,000 to market the event. We had 15 applications, that's 15 people that would like to start a business in downtown Nancee. And then we'll have the top five present and- And then we'll have the top five present in September. So we're actively trying to come up with new ways to support and create new businesses.
Councilman Zalinski, can I ask a question? What do you think of downtown of N.C.?
Well, I need to clarify, I'm asking questions that have been asked by giving the DVA an opportunity to pair those answers. So I'm just, I'm just asking a question. Some of the questions I get is people don't see the value of the DVA as a taxpayer living outside that district. And what I'm trying to get across is what is that value to me as a taxpayer? What do I benefit? How does it help my general fund budget? Where's the benefit?
I guess what value has the Riverwalk added? What value has the streetscape improvements added? What value has the book theater created for the downtown? Since the book theater opened, over 20 new businesses have started in the downtown that still operate today. So I think we've created value by increasing economic activity in the downtown.
You know, Mary raised an issue of employment. Predating you, go back to Patrick Kay, I've often requested some numbers on this. Now, how many run-ins do we have in the downtown district now? And what capacity do we have to expand that and what progress are we making? How many people in what downtown, what's the average employee made as far as, you know, are we talking about family sustaining jobs or are we talking about minimum wage jobs? You know, what kind of financial impact does it have? What kind of workforce does it have? And I know everybody is friendly now, the, to get employees, it's always hard to find. You know, people are going back to school, back to college and back to high school. And so I tend to operate off of measures, you know, numbers. I mean, did we increase, are we increasing payroll? Are we increasing the number of jobs? Are we increasing the number of employees? What's the occupancy rate? If you have a high occupancy rate, you're priced out of the market or there's not enough demand. So if you follow my logic, if I'm an investor, I don't want to build more when you have high occupancy to begin with. Or you have to build towards a sweet spot that's being missed and stuff. So, you know, I look back when the DVA started, we had an initial base of $6 billion. Here we come into 18, 19, we're about $9.5 billion over that. Then we're talking 21, 22 year period of time. So, you know, when we're aware of that, I think one of the questions I get from people is how much has the value in downtown changed in the last six or eight years? I mean, is our taxable base growing up?
This was the first year we had an increase in tax along with value and properly.
I know the city, the city's disturbed in that, in that aspect also. But, you know, I'm just asking a question. And then the question is, you know, the side rent. Does the side rent do anything to increase the value?
I would say maintaining, helping property owners maintain the exterior of their building at least maintains property, I think she does.
You have some pretty aggressive plans and some vision in this document. I mean, you talked about the Riverwalk, but there's a statement in here that assumes that the maintenance of the Riverwalk and the walk would be assumed by the city. Is that including a 30 minute street construction or just the overall of the walk?
So the numbers included in the plan include continuing the $18,000 payment that we currently make to the city to contract for that services.
We currently contract for that service.
Yeah.
One of the issues, I think Mayor Prochazewski has indicated that I hear from people that, you know, takes away from the tax base as opposed to being paid for by people that benefit from it. And that's why I asked a question about the differences in financing for DVA's because when we read the state statute, some communities were financing the DVA with a 2 mil surcharge on the effective businesses and that had no impact on the rest of the community because of self-paying, part of program for the rest, for the people that are impacted by this.
I strongly disagree that the downtown doesn't benefit the rest of the community.
That's not exactly what I said, but I mean, I'm saying it takes, takes away from the overall competitive risk.
Except that an additional $100,000 would be going out to the county and then in some case to the outside the county even for the other taxing jurisdiction. So we're capturing $100,000 that wouldn't be spent in the city. And we're still spending the $160,000 that we do capture in city taxes within the city limits. So I think we are, every single dollar that we spend in the city is spent, or that we capture from the city is spent within the city.
I think there's a good breakdown in, in fact, on which taxes are captured and what the benefit is. And I see that. I'm just saying there's other options for financing the DVA.
I understand. When considering the village, we also need to take into account that the cost of construction that we're looking at currently at $200, $250 a square foot is going to make redeveloping properties even at the current tax rate very difficult. So then if we add another two mills to the downtown district, I see redeveloping properties even more difficult than it currently is.
As a building property owner downtown, and I know there's a number of others on the board that are states and building ownerships. And as something in the nine years that I've been on the DVA board, a recurring theme is that our taxes are too high in the downtown and it prevents businesses and property owners from being successful to the point of not being able to maintain their properties, et cetera. So while raising taxes always seems like the golden, the boost delays the golden egg, oh, more money, often that can be detrimental in the ultimate revenue collective because it disincentivizes a lot of activity.
Mayor, no, sure.
Go ahead.
The other thing that we need to look at in selecting projects or activities where the DVA would be spending TIF that's being captured, we look at what return are we going to get for those dollars expended? And when we look at the total amount of, the total cost of the projects that we have listed in the TIF table, it's about $9.5 billion plus minus. That, those activities then would generate private investment as well as would provide the ability for the DVA to bring in state federal dollars, primary state. Because the vast majority of the projects that would be undertaken downtown was already, the downtown is built up. We cannot develop a lot of new, we have to redevelop. So when we look at what investment that expenditure will generate, we have a six to one, five and a half to six to one return. So for the $9.5 billion that in the local taxes counting in city, we estimate based on what we see in other communities and what we've done here, about $54, $55 million in private investment. Now, you say that we give away dollars. Well, we're not giving anything that we don't have. And by not explaining that, we're not going to see that private investment. I can tell you from private, from personal experience, that but for the DVA or being in a downtown location, two of the redevelopment projects downtown would not have happened. And when we're considering additional projects, being in a downtown where there is a lot of activity and there is entertainment and so on, that is key to investing further. And it's not just us, there are a lot of other developers and a lot of other employers. So the quality of life and activity that the DVA is creating is necessary in order to attract employees, whether the employees, there are not employees that work right in downtown. They may be down at PCA or Marty Marietta or at the hospital. But they need, employees need the activity of the downtown in order to consider coming here.
Just to build off that, that the downtown is a major attraction for the employer base to get employees here. I mean, if you were at the Potrick Rising Tide meeting, the representative from the Manufacturers Council said that they're going to be in a 10-year hiring phase. And he said currently their employees are choosing to live elsewhere. Why is that? I think it would be because we don't have the amenities in the downtown that other communities do.
Well, to be specific, relating to the housing, one of the things, one of the projects of the DVA that's pretty high in our list is bringing state dollars from living in sea to assist downtown building owners with rehabilitating their upstairs apartments. You know, for those of you who've been around for a while, you remember back in about 10, 15 years ago when the city was bringing MISTA regular rehabilitation dollars? And we had about a dozen apartments that was downtown that were rehabilitated. We're looking at about 45 to 55 apartments generated or created by bringing the state dollars.
I'm going to, I'm going to share the mayor Prochazewski's concern. There were people, people ask me questions about the DVA and I'm certainly versed enough about the purpose of the DVA and how it came about and public act and such to point out some of the processes and the benefits, but hopefully they come away with a different perspective than what they approached me with. But in most instances, they associate DVA with DIFs and in different events and stuff like that. They don't tend to associate it with development and economic development downtown. Yes, the DVA bought the book theater and installed the book theater to the National Park group and made some loans and got the ball rolling and it's the open draw, yes it is. But you know, I always, I would always also say at the same time that when people come in and they see a business like Fillmore that absolutely exceeds expectations and knows their capacity and expands a year after they open the door, they get charged by those things. When they go to the North Channel and they see waiting lines to get into it and they could service and they like the beverage, they're going to come back, you know? That likewise encourages other people. And I know some of the North Channel people have been pretty open about, this is just the beginning for them. They want to see where this touches base and move on. And there's, there's a lot of dollars and a lot of threes in this document moving forward. But I just, you know, to add to discussion and say, you know, the general perception is that the TIF-driven organization resident the development-driven organization.
And do you feel we spend enough time, too much time on events and should we be focusing on other areas?
We're in the process of trying to address that and free up more of my time to work on economic planning.
So I can add to that. In my experience over the years, working in a lot of communities with DVA's and other organizations with cities, you need both. We need both the economic activity, the economic development and the redevelopment activity, but we also need events. You know, the community that plays together stays together. And the successful communities have a lot of events. Now, as Tyler says, we are looking at which of those events have the most impact, positive impact. But we need the events as well. Very, I'm sorry.
I think I want to add on events. It's obvious why the public's perception of these events, their nature is very public. Things behind the scenes where you're spending hours working with the prospect. And then let's say they, you know, start something that tied as much less known, even if, you know, in a council meeting updates periodically, Tyler presents some of that information to council. But as it relates to events, even though that's the perception, as it relates to dollars and tax dollars and TIF, our events are actually a profit-making mechanism for the DVA. So we earn more money for our events than we actually spend on them, other than Tyler's time, which is a cost and that's something we're looking to address. And actually, in some of the discussions we had, there, there's probably a mindset on the board that we'd like to be less involved in events, we don't want to see them go away, but they can be time-consuming. But we're worried about how we're going to fill our budget hole if we spin those off to other organizations. So, you know, as it relates to the TIF and our taxpayer funding, while events are an important thing that people see, it's actually not where their tax dollars are going. The tax dollars, as Tyler said earlier, today are primarily going to a bond payment to pay off the streetscape from 20 years ago timeframe. Obviously, that bond payment is soon to end and the plan really is envisioning, what does that freed up sum of money go into the next project? And that mechanism might be another bond offering to accumulate those funds to do kind of a big bang and then pay it off again over the next 20 years. It could be a kind of trickle over the 20-year period. There are lots of different ways we can accomplish some of these items in different timeframes. And obviously, we need to be working with council on all of those ideas as they present themselves.
My, from my perspective, it just might be, I look at economic development as a long-term investment, it's not a kind of money. I look at events as a short-term, weather dependent, it's all kinds of things. Now, whether there's a good combination or a good balance there, I think what you're saying is that's what you're trying to find is that balance between the two. But I think economic development is the top of my list to natural, I'd like to say a lot of money goes in that area, just wondering.
And it works already.
Yeah, that's what it is.
And Governor, Governor Katz summed it up when he was here Friday and it's, you know, what is economic development doing, it's not a good thing, family sustaining jobs. He says, when you have good thing or family sustaining jobs, everything else is going to... everything else becomes a problem. And I think, I think that's true. The reason I bring some of these things up is their perceptions and their comments I get from, from people that I meet in public and hour and a long time ago, that perceptions of reality is who to do something to change the perception on a person or whole. I think sometimes the city and our assets, what we have available to the developer, to assistance, I mean, people, sometimes we just don't do an over-the-top job of selling or providing and, and our benefits. Kind of a behind-the-scenes kind of thing, you know. You get TGIF done Friday night and it's kind of like next. And we haven't been watching, geez, you know, how many people do we estimate that we had downtown versus a typical Friday? How were the sales of businesses during that event versus a typical Saturday Friday? Those tangible measurables that you can kill people, the maps and things that are online show people where they conveniently park because of River Street's code. You know, just little things like that. I'm not diminishing the value of the, of the DDA. I'm just sharing, it'd just be some of the things that I've heard and talking about options that are out there. And there's, there's more than taxing and financing. There's, there's abilities. I understand everybody wants to know it. Some people talk about a special ability to fix streets. Some people are going to do that. But that's okay for some people, but for others, it's kind of an over-the-top kind of issue for them. I understand the value and the capture taxes that we remove, a hundred thousand dollars that the DDA removes that otherwise would go to the contract. I understand that, but just having a conversation.
Sure. And another value of events is that they involve a lot of volunteers. They, at the end, we have what about? Between the various events and the various activities, how many volunteers do we have?
I don't know. Many is or, because if we're talking about volunteers on opposite boxes, up to like forty people just somehow.
So overall, we have in excess of a hundred and fifty, two hundred people that continue, you know, community members that, that volunteer for events, for DDA committees, DDA activities. So there is a value there for which I don't know how to put a dollar on, a dollar value. But you have a lot of people who are working together and that further enhances the community spirit. And no, there's no way to put, at least I don't know how to put a dollar value for that. But there is. When you get people working closely, you get to know each other.
Well, I'll, I'll just make a side note here. I've noticed last couple of weekends, last weekend, I have not seen as many people in our beaches or downtown. Except maybe Fourth of July or the sleigh opera. I mean, there have been a lot of people here. Now, if you want to put all that on prospect, what you do is you hold traffic on US thirty-one. We had an accident here the other day and I waited an hour and a half in line. I could not believe the number of cars that go through this town until you stop. Holy cow, there's a lot of traffic going through here. We need to get a big metal capture if you're going to hit something.
Well, it's interesting that you mention that because probably five years ago now, the DDA Strategic Bank basically identified what we called at that time traffic capture off of US thirty-one as one of our priorities. And since that time, that overall arching goal has taken many different routes. Some unfruitful discussions with MDOT on signage. But MDOT's goal is to get traffic flowing through as fast as possible and as safely as possible, kind of counter to our goal where we were going to slow down and notice what they're missing if they just happen to pull to the left as they're driving past River Street. But this, I don't know, a year ago when the DDA acquired a parcel basically at the intersection of River Street and US thirty-one with the idea of redeveloping it. And there's, there's many aspects of that. We just had a meeting with, that kind of raider who's basically facilitating a design concept for that parcel. But, you know, that, part of that goal is, okay, let's redevelop the building. Okay, that brings economic activity, brings jobs, brings some of those sense. But also, let's try and improve that intersection such that people know that US thirty-one, that's not downtown manacy. And to your point, the number of people that drive through and buy on a regular basis, they don't even know what they're missing. Improving that intersection in ways, and that's one of the projects listed in this plan, is, you know, and starting some of that process. There are many aspects, I mean, I don't know if you said it earlier, to economic development. At the end, it is about, you know, jobs. But even in the governor's talk on Friday, it branched out into housing and all these other things, which aren't jobs, but if you don't have those pieces, you can't retain the people who want to work.
First, check interview.
I think it's important to remember that, you know, there are, there are, we keep talking about economic development and it's very important, but one of the biggest issues about downtown is, and you can read the research on it, is that they are, they're your brand. They're our man, that is manacy brand. And you're going to want that brand to be looking great. You're going to want it filled with people. You're going to want that activities because that is who we are. It is people judge us on going to our downtown. So it is our heartbeat. The other thing too is that there are several areas that are important beyond the economic development. Those are the social and the civic pieces of your downtown as well. So being viable and being successful and vibrant is important to the whole city, the whole community. And I came back to that because if we don't make that distinction, if we don't understand that, and let's say DDA goes away, I want to know what you, I'm going to hold the city council responsible for taking care of that. So do we have a plan? You know, we're saying, here's a plan, here's an idea, here's what we can do, here's what we can offer. I know when I got this group, it was, it took a lot of reading to understand TIF and all of this stuff. So I can understand where our taxpayers are going away and where's all this money going? Because it does look like it's going into a black hole sometimes when you see the events only. But truly, if you think about, and I know many of you have been residents here for a long time, think about how we have rebranded our downtown only in the last five years. It's been amazing. And so we're seeing that happening. So think of it that way as well.
You go up and have a rest. And I'm going to do some research on that. Because there are areas who have not extended the life of their DDA's. And who's taking the part, who's taking the responsibility for that? I've been through those now and I don't see much of a difference. I think probably they're going to take the responsibility. But that's good for you. And I'll do some research on that. Because there are going to be dropping out of the DDA's. And a lot more than there has been. There seems to be a kind of a flood of the DDA's that's dropping out. So that's good.
And I think that it's, the DDA, of course, you know, I'm passionate about it because I want to continue to help our brand. I want the city to be successful. If, if some other greater opportunities out there, of course, you know, we, we all kind of go, yeah, as long as the downtown is growing and developing and doing well, I don't think anybody would argue that. But we're charged with making sure that all of that still stays in place and that we're doing the right thing as, as time goes on.
I guess what I'm not really clear about reading this, and maybe I'm just not reading in depth enough, is that how do we accomplish that goal through the plan that I see? How is that, how is that going to work? Maybe it isn't detailed enough for me and I'm just not smart enough to figure it out.
Well, part of an answer to your question, it's actually a complaint I have really on both sides of this table, is communication historically has not been good between the DDA and council. And that's got to change because if our two organizations are in line, sharing common goals and sharing common strategies, then that will flow through to the actual ultimate process.
The way we're doing anything, we have accomplished it.
Right. And specifically, I know earlier, council had their quarterly strategic plan update. And I knew that was going to be on the agenda tonight and it really dawned on me in looking at the city's strategic plan, and I'll, I'll mention this with multiple of my hats, as the DDA, it would be very helpful if the council and the city, as part of their strategic plan, here is our goals for the DDA for the coming year. Here is our goals for the head commission, another hat for the coming year. Here is our goals for parks, the community. It's sprinkled through there, but as the DDA looking at the strategic plan of the city, I have to pick and choose, oh, I think we could help on that. Oh, I think we can help on that. We're not really getting direction. We're also not contributing into your strategic planning process to help you with our expertise around this table, you know, come up with those goals. But I think there's a lot more we can do to align both our strategic plans. We spend a day off-site every winter working on updating our strategic plan. I know you generally have a number of meetings throughout the year where you're doing that, but they're disjointed efforts. If we're on the same page, the things we do with taxpayer dollars that come from the district will naturally be much more aligned than perhaps they have.
So how do you, how do you suggest that we would accomplish that? Have a monthly meeting, a quarterly meeting?
I, we within our organization have struggled with the same thing because we have committees underneath us. And historically, the committees kind of do whatever they want, kind of isolated from the board's direction. We've adopted a much tighter strategic planning process where for each committee, we, as part of the board's strategic planning, establish goals for each committee. We ask the committees first to provide us input into that process so that we're not going out of the black or out of the loop. And I think, you know, maybe something like that or something else. I mean, I don't have the answer. Again, I was just thinking about this today is, you know, we've struggled for years and I think many of us know we've had communication issues, but how can we improve our planning such that we're working?
I've been a opponent for some time on more frequent meetings between the DDA and city council because we do have to work in. Like one of the issues that came up Friday in the Rising Tide there is you have all these organizations, be it county, be it city, be it township or, or the chamber or the DDA, all these people doing things in their own little arena. And you're probably spending time and energy that someone else is doing in their own little arena that are along the same line, where you could be doing those things together and saving resources on all things. So, you know, if, if we all know where we're going and we're working in a common direction, it's a lot easier to get there, you know, takes a lot less time and energy and resources to get there. And it's worth it.
So make a specific suggestion. The, the list of descriptions of projects and cost estimates that you had in the gift plan, starting on item five, where we go into, you have a cost for the River Walk or Gateway or Street Scape and so on. There are a lot of numbers there. Well, these are summary numbers. In order to come up with these numbers, we look at a lot of specific projects. We have long spreadsheets that where we identify sub-projects and locations and sites. And then we assign some numbers, some costs. And then we came up with these summaries. What we could be doing is occasionally go through the various projects in more detail and say, okay, this is what we have targeted, say, for the next year. Because remember, this is the long-term plan. It's not just for the next year. And we can be going through and say, okay, for item three A, that's where we are. Yeah, there are numbers here. There's nine and a half million in costs. But they have bases. We have the basis for these numbers. And we should be discussing those with, you know, in more detail.
Well, I'm, I'm just going to speak my mind. I've been telling a lot of meetings for quite a few years. And this conversation is not, we're not at any rule here. This conversation of collaboration and going down to the high level hall and once you leave the building, nothing ever happens. It's all over again. So I guess my attitude now is I'm not going to get too excited until I actually see something happen. I would like to leave here today with some reassurance that we're actually going to step down and figure out how we're going to collaborate and how we're going to do that better. That would be my goal. Otherwise, it's just not.
Can we set a schedule for, for group?
How busy, how busy is the agenda going forward for strategic planning? I don't think it's overly busy. I don't, I can't tell you exactly what we have to do. I think we can squeeze something out. Yeah, we look at somewhere as in October then.
Would you be agreeable to revisiting in October?
Can you give an update on where we are with the different projects?
Where, yeah, where the projects are because, you know, I think that's, that's one of the things. The, I'm interested in, in the thirty-one and River Street project. I think council members are interested in going. I'm sure everybody's aware that property was purchased by the DDA and the city and there are development efforts in progress on that. I was talking in the last meeting last week about purchasing another piece of property that has great potential for development. Those are the kind of things that I'm interested in doing personally because redevelopment of property is going, we're going to attract attention. And if I ever work him on myself, we sit down on River Walk and cost of the voters and stuff like that and we talk to the people that are coming through and, Mr. Goodwin, right. You know, the people, people don't talk about voted-up storefronts. They talk about where they're working, the experience they have. They don't talk about what's not there. They talk about the quaintness of the town and the uniqueness of the town. There's heads of visitors over the weekend from the Hennelows that come here every year with us. And people from Chicago on the Big, you know, I could retire on that quote. But, and, and it's a destination for them. And I, I think, you know, that's what we want to be doing and be rambling to the point that we're a destination for walking. But it also has to be a great, a great place to do work and play and ask for the people.
Thank you for the questions.
If I could just add, if we meet again in October, that's going to be one month away from the DDA update anyway that I gave last year. I would suggest that when we do our strategic planning session and we lay out our goals for the next few years, or the next year for each committee, I then come back to city council, tell you, these are the goals we're setting for this next year. Do you agree with them? What else do you think we should add? And then I take that back to my board to make that adjustment to the strategic plan and without, you know, do that annually. And that would be the way I would suggest moving forward.
What I'm suggesting is that we find something that we can truly work together on in the council. Not just giving an update on what you're doing, but a project that we can work together on in the council.
Again, I'm saying we'll do our strategic planning session in January is when we typically do it. We set out the goals. We say, we're going to accomplish X, Y, and Z in this committee, this committee, this committee. And then our board adopts that plan. All I'm saying is an extra step in our strategic planning session where I come to city council and I tell you, here's our goals for this next year. Do you want to add something or do you think? Do you want to add something, or do you think something needs to be changed? I bring it back to the board and we adopt our strategic plan, and I continue to work on those goals.
Well, and now we go through something more specific, the American leaders program, 31. In the next few weeks, we're going to have some plans from the architects that the MEDC is providing for us, not post for us, and we're going to be in a position where we only have costs, and we're going to be looking at a redevelopment program. That's an opportunity to come to you, or sit down with you and talk about, this is what we can provide the DDA, this is what we can bring from a developer, and this is what the developer or the developer team would need from council.
Let's begin.
Let's get down to the specifics.
Okay, we can also work that light, too. City and the DDA, this is sometimes affecting.
Just one, one thing, we can grab, we can wrap ourselves around and work together and talk. I would say thank you all for coming in.
I have one more comment, related to Tyler's proposal there, is, I think this forum is better than just having our director tell council what we adopted, because I think hearing, us hearing and having it able to dialogue, I think, so I would just recommend that in that process, it should be a joint meeting like this. That's how we're going for that.
And we can have meetings where we all sit at the same table, too.
That would be good. Tyler, what's the next step now in with the gift plan? What we need to do next, or what we want the council to do?
Well, that's really up to how the council wants to go forward. The next plan, if there's no changes that we're looking at, would be to move to a notice of public hearing. Unless you have further discussion.
Is everybody, everybody looking at the plan? Do you think it's ready for public hearing? Do you think public hearing before it's approved after council?
Yes. And not, is there something else we should be providing?
I think you find, find out in a public hearing. I started again, public hearing.
I think we should move to a public hearing and then discuss.
Does that have a meeting in October and go from there? Everybody on the table?
I have others.
Other, what's other?
Uh, quick others.
Mr. Taylor, do you have anything for others?
I don't.
I don't?
No, you know, I do for Mr. Taylor.
I'll see, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Taylor, I noticed we have a crime report from the county and stuff in the paper, where things are happening, that type of thing. Can we get that in our local paper?
I'm sure I can have a discussion with the public safety director, see about that.
I think it's important, a lot of different reasons, but one of the reasons is we're being eased and you know about it, you might take some extra precaution, you might be a little more observant, you might want to report suspicious behavior, but if you don't know about it, you just don't pay attention to it. I would like to see that.
City clerk, you got anything for?
Public clerk?
Government.
Engineer, you want to add your own?
Um, one thing I have to say is, talked to a person today who had a real mental emergency, and he just wanted me to let him know the public, the fire department, and the police department did an amazing job, and he wanted to say thank you personally, and we've had a, a day here.
Now, we've had, I had two of those, as a matter of fact, I'm going to pick on my mayor, put them. Padre here, his daughter had a heart attack yesterday, Larry Bosky, the county championship, the, those people in the box of prayer, that's, that's important, that we think and reach out to people who are having those kind of problems. With that, midterm.
Yep. Thank you.